T 20.17 refusal report for 219 Queen Street West. Mayor Ford held the item down. Do you have questions to staff? Mayor Ford? Have questions to staff?
Yeah, I'd like to know why staff is refusing this, but councillor Vaughan had a motion. And I want to know if you support that motion or not. No, he had it up and then I held it. So I'd like to see the motion that he's put forward. Do you support what the local councillor is presenting here?
Through you, Madam Chair. The staff recommended a refusal of this application. And that was considered at Toronto East York Community Council at the last meeting. Subsequently, the, I understand, the councillor has had meetings with the community and with the applicant and has reached a settlement. And that's the nature of this motion that's before council.
So you don't support this?
The staff recommended refusal of the application. The motion in its substance is put forward in a correct manner. We've been consulted on its contents. We did not recommend this application.
Can you give me some reasons why you didn't, why you don't support this that's in front of us here today? The councillor's Vaughan motion?
With respect to the, to the application, we did our analysis and we feel that it's overdevelopment of the site. The site is a very small site. The proposal does not meet the separation distances that are called for in this type of development. It's adjacent to the Queen Street Heritage Conservation District. And the site, or the development, doesn't present any transition to that. A smaller scale development would have been more appropriate, in staff's opinion. And that is why we recommended refusal.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councillor Shiner, questions to staff?
Could I see the rest of the motion up on the screen? The bottom of it? So, section F is a million dollar section 37 agreement. Was that part of your negotiations?
No, the, the local councillor's office, as I indicated, had discussions with the applicant in order to pursue a settlement.
So is the million dollars, then, the real big change from what was at community council?
Well, the motion, as I understand it, reviews certain changes to the development.
Like what?
The podium, for example, has been modified to include non-residential land uses, as I read it. The setbacks have been adjusted slightly. It's also introduced, as we try to achieve in this area, three-bedroom units. And it includes the standard provisions that we would use for section 37. It's cost escalation and things like that. So those elements of it are in order.
But otherwise, your recommendation to refuse would continue even with these small modifications?
Yes, that's correct.
And you wouldn't recommend taking a million-dollar buy-off instead in section 37 to approve this, would you?
We usually look at these applications as a matter of good planning first, and then we negotiate a section 37.
So a million dollars wouldn't buy your approval?
I wouldn't characterize it that way.
But the million-dollar section 37, even with that in place, you wouldn't recommend we support this?
No.
Thank you.
Councillor Vaughan, questions to staff?
This site, what's across the street from this site?
Across the street to the north is the, the federal government 15-story courthouse building, part of the Canada Life complex.
And is this building exactly the same height as the building across the street?
I believe it's approximately the same height, yes. In stories, it's different.
And it has exactly the same zoning?
I think the Canada Life development has a site-specific zoning for the Canada Life complex.
It's not, it's not part of the Canada Life secondary plan. In fact, that's why it was appealed to the OMB by local residents. Does it not have exactly the same zoning as the site across the street that receives city support to go to the, for its approval and has exactly the same transition issues to the Heritage Conservation District?
I think the, the Heritage Conservation District came after that, that development through you, Madam Chair. And the consideration that staff's given to this new proposal and its adjacency on the south side of Queen is slightly different.
Does it not have exactly the same transition issues to the Heritage Conservation District?
We didn't obtain those transitions on the Canada Life development. And we, we are hoping to obtain those transition elements in this development.
The Canada Life building was appealed to the OMB despite a city approval. Was that appeal successful?
I don't believe so.
Right. So, so the zoning across the street, which is identical, and the OMB decision across the street, which is on the same land with the same sort of zoning, is identical to the building on the south side of Queen Street. What is our success rate? What do you think our success rate would be at the OMB?
I don't want to speculate on our success rate at the OMB in public, through you, Madam Chair. I think the zoning, the underlying zoning in this case, the base zoning is identical. It achieved a site-specific zoning to realize the office development, which then gave rise to the HCD after that.
I understand that. The other issue is the, the section 37, it was negotiated with figures delivered to my office by planning staff?
Yes, we were consulted. And as it indicated, the form of the, the motion in respect of the section 37 provisions is consistent with the official plan and what we've been garnering in that area.
And if this application went to the OMB without directions on a settlement around section 37 and an approval is granted, the city would not receive any section 37 dollars as a result of the way it currently is configured?
That's, that's what we would have to contest at the OMB. And it's, it's possible that that would be contested.
So if we sent to this, if we don't settle this, because this case is at the OMB, if we don't settle this, we'll get a bigger building, we'll get a building with encroachment on, on the properties to the north, to the south. We'll get no three-bedroom units in the building. We'll get no new commercial property on Queen Street. We'll simply take the building that's in front of us to the OMB, and that's it.
Or no guarantees at the Interim Municipal Board.
So the choice that was in front of the community was to pull the building away from the neighbouring condominium, to lower the height of the building, to increase the setbacks on the top floors, to reconfigure the alleyways so that service vehicles didn't have to encroach on the property to the south. And additional to that, we also got new commercial property being delivered to us instead of pure residential.
I understand that that's, those are the changes that have been achieved through this settlement.
And it's identical in height to the building across the street?
Yes.
And, and its setback from the Heritage Conservation District is identical to the building across the street as well?
Again, we have these concerns that have been outlined in our refusal report, councillor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Vaughan. That completes the questions. Mayor Ford, you held the item?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Speaker. I encourage you to do what staff is saying. Refuse this report. I'd be more than happy to support that. If you're going to go against staff and ask for a million dollars, there's something wrong with this picture here. Staff said absolutely not. A million dollars? Do they accept it? No. No, this is like, it's black or white. The local councillor just can't come, coming in and going against what staff believes and say, "Well, we're getting a million dollars." This is absolutely wrong. This is, this is terrible.
Have questions of the mayor?
Councillor, councillor Vaughan with questions.
What's wrong with the height of the building?
It's not about doing what staff wants. It has nothing to do with the height of the building, the zoning. You know what? This almost looks like a shakedown. With the section 37 money, it looks like a shakedown. They say no, you're going up and saying, "Well, I want a million dollars." And then we'll do what you want to do. You're not listening to what staff says. Staff has been quite adamant and straightforward about this.
What is wrong with this building?
I've just answered your question.
Is it the height?
I just answered your question. It's about the million dollars, councillor Vaughan. You can't go and shake down developers for a million dollars.
It's the section 37 agreement.
It is, it has nothing to do with the million dollars or the section 37. The staff said no. You could, I'd probably get, it's not the amount of the money. And they're refusing the report. That's what they're saying. They don't want to deal with, they'll accept something else, but they're not going to accept what you're putting forward.
So what instructions should we give to staff regarding?
Send it back to staff? Or send it back to, send it over to planning?
You understand that a hearing has been scheduled at the OMB?
You know what? I completely understand that. Does councillor Milchin, the head of the planning committee, support this?
You can ask him, but the issue is this.
He does not, he does not support it, and staff doesn't support it.
His file is at the OMB. What instructions are we to give city staff and city legal regarding the OMB? You can't send it back to staff. It's at the OMB. It's not in front of council anymore.
You can send it to staff. It's irrelevant. Or you can refuse the report and let the board deal with it.
Send it to staff to do what?
Ask them to sit down with the applicant and review it all and see what's acceptable. There's something that can be built there. They just said lower density, but not what you're proposing for a million dollars.
The applicant has made it very clear that this is the building they want. Have you talked to the applicant?
Not over a million dollars?
Have you talked to the applicant?
No, I haven't talked to him. No.
And so you're unaware as to whether or not they entered into this agreement voluntarily?
No, I haven't, I don't get involved with situations like this.
So you don't know the heritage status of the site?
All I know...
You don't know the height of the building?
All I know is staff doesn't support it.
You don't know the community's response?
And I know that there shouldn't be people going around and asking developers for a million dollars.
You don't know the community's position on this.
Did you ask the developer for a million dollars for this? Did you ask the developer for a million dollars to invest in your...
Sorry, it's my question.
Did you?
It's my question.
Okay, no, no. I'm going to, I'm going to ask you the question.
Sorry.
So you didn't go up, you didn't go up and ask a developer for a million dollars?
I asked, what I asked is...
All, all I'm saying is that looks like a shakedown. I don't, call it what you want. You cannot go up to developers and say, "I want a million dollars," when staff says they don't want it. That's a problem. That is problematic, councillor Vaughan. If you think that's the right way to do business, that's not the way you do business down here. Okay? That is wrong.
Councillor Ford. Councillor Ford, we don't need your help.
It's, it's absolutely wrong. So no, I never talked to developers.
Councillor Ford, councillor Ford, we don't need your help.
You know what?
Councillor Ford, come to order, please.
My community wants to know.
Your community would not support you going to developers...
Councillor Ford, for the last time, please come to order, councillor, Mr Mayor. Councillor... Three, three minutes. Okay, thank you. Councillor McConnell, councillor McConnell. Okay. Everybody take a deep breath. Councillor McConnell, councillor McConnell. Councillor McConnell, would you like me to recognize you? Do you have a point you'd like to make?
No, I think I made it.
No, I saw councillor, the name of councillor Perks, but it has vaporized. So that's...
I answered my question. If you're going to run clock...
Sir, no, I was, there, there's, there's our clock. Sorry. Yeah. Okay. Councillor Perks, you're back up again.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions of the mayor? Mr Mayor, did you attend any of the public meetings on this?
Nope. Again, I had nothing to do with this development. But what I didn't like is councillor Vaughan trying to get in. A motion without even consent, without even anybody in debate on this. This is back-dooring a quick motion. Staff doesn't support it. That's the bottom line. Then say a million dollars. No, I'm totally, that's absolutely wrong.
I appreciate, Mr Mayor.
You don't try to sneak in a motion like this and ram it through. You don't work like that.
I appreciate, Mr Mayor, that you don't want to get into the complexities of planning. I understand that's difficult for you. I asked if you attended any meetings.
Councillor, hold on a second there. Councillor Perks, councillor Perks, that's not a helpful observation. Would you please confine your remarks to questions of the mayor? Councillor, councillor Perks, on a point of privilege. I'm, I'm interested that you're the one, that you're the one raising the point of privilege, but let's hear it.
No, Speaker, actually, my point of privilege is this. I asked, I asked the mayor a question. And you, as the speaker, are governing this process. I asked the mayor a question about whether he had attended any meetings. The mayor did not answer that question. I was attempting to get the answer to that question. And you have been actually ruling me as being the person causing the difficulty here. Similarly, the mayor has...
What is your point of privilege, councillor Perks?
It's a point of privilege. The mayor has cast aspersions on the, on the ethics of members of this council as well. You've made no effort to call his remarks to order for that. My point of privilege is that you have failed to call the mayor to order for his remarks, violating the privilege of members of this council, and yet you choose to interrupt me. I don't think that you're doing your job in a disinterested and dispassionate way, and I would like you to begin to do it.
Okay. Let's, let's begin, let's begin by not, let's begin by not making personal remarks about others when your purpose in being recognized is to pose questions. Let's, with all of us on a better footing, let's proceed.
So you're not going to rule on my point of privilege, sir?
I'm ruling that there's room for everyone to improve their behavior, and let's all try to do our best from here on in.
I, I, I understand, sir.
Councillor Perks, I heard you make a gratuitous offensive remark that was not a question whatsoever. It was simply an insult. And frankly, that is why I intervened. The fact that another comment was made that characterized a, 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 a form of behavior in one way that you didn't, that, that you didn't find acceptable is a point that's fair to raise, but it wasn't, it, it was not a gratuitous remark in the nature of yours when you're up there to ask questions and you slip in a personal insult. Sorry, I put that in a different category. It doesn't matter which party made which remark, that is the one that put things over the limit, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So that is why, that is why, that is why I intervened in response to that particular remark. But let's all just bring the temperature down a little bit and stick to the matter before us.
No, I thank you. I now understand. I now understand. Sorry, I'm asking questions.
Mr Deputy Speaker, I'd be more than happy to withdraw the word "shakedown." But asking, yeah, I'd be more than happy to withdraw that. But asking developers to pay a million dollars and go against staff outright, that's problematic. Okay? So if I offended the local councillor saying it was a shakedown, I withdraw that. But I don't appreciate any councillor, not just councillor Vaughan, going to developers and saying, "I want a million dollars," and then we'll get your project going.
No, that's not how it works.
Well, it's going against what staff says. So the councillors, I guess, staff too.
Okay, I'll tell you something. I've got another problem here. I'm trying to make sense of the clock here. That clock is running. My clock is not. I don't know how to stop it. I've been, all, okay, so all I can do is reset it to zero to correct it. So let me do that with about 30 seconds left on this, as it were, line of questioning. Councillor Perks, 30 seconds to go.
Thank you very much. Mr Mayor, does it ameliorate your view in any way that members of the community were part of the discussion on changing the application from what it was, from what staff originally refused? Does that help you at all?
Then why do we have staff? If they're, if the local councillor is going to do all the planning and say, "We don't need staff," then we shouldn't be paying these people if they'd be sitting there and trying to deal with our applications that come forward. You or anyone else can just say, "Okay, I'll deal with the section 37. I will deal everything, and we don't need staff." So why, why is it even here?
Am I to take, am I to take from your answer then, sir, that you don't think the public should be part of the planning process?
Absolutely, the public should be part of it. But when staff says no to it, the people should listen.
If you think that the public should be part of the planning process, does it in any way ameliorate your view that the public participated with the councillor and the planners in coming to the agreement that councillor Vaughan has moved into today?
Staff does not support it.
Does it ameliorate your view?
Staff does not support this, period. This application says, "Refuse it." Let's refuse it. Let's start listening to staff, regardless of the million dollars, $2 million, $5 million. It's wrong for him to be asking developers for this money. And I asked him if he did. Obviously, he sat down and negotiated this. Again, I think that's problematic.
So, so I'm clear. Given that staff's refusal was of the original report, and staff actually has not filed a supplementary report, but rather what we have in front of us is a motion that the councillor negotiated with the community, and I'm just not quite there, sir.
And staff does not support that, that motion that the local councillor...
Mayor Ford, let's not interrupt. This will be the last question.
Can you show me how you've come to that conclusion? Do you have a document indicating that?
I just asked staff, "Do you support Adam Vaughan's motion?" They said no. They were, they were quite...
Thank you, councillor Perks. Your time has long since expired. Councillor McConnell, the question?
No, I think I, I think, I think I'll just leave it. I'll speak.
Thank you, councillor McConnell. Councillor Nunziata, the question?
Yes. To the mayor. The reason you're speaking against this application is that the questions that you asked the staff, the staff did not recommend this application because of the density, correct?
Absolutely. They, that's what they said.
Correct. And the motion by councillor Vaughan is if the staff is against this application means that we have to hire outside counsel at the OMB?
Obviously, yes.
Correct?
Yes, obviously, yeah.
Okay. So that is the reason why you're standing here, asking council to support the staff recommendation, which is refusal, which we do all the time in this council chambers, correct?
All the time. And councillor Vaughan is completely disregarding what they're saying.
And he's at a section 37, but that's something that's negotiated through any development application. But the main reason that you're standing here to refuse the application, that staff is refusing it, and we have to hire outside counsel to go to the OMB?
That's obvious, absolutely.
Correct? Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nunziata. Councillor DiGiorgio.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, thank you, Mr Deputy Speaker. I'm a little bit confused. If this matter goes to the board as proposed by the councillor on an agreement that he's presumably managed to negotiate with the, the applicant, where does that leave the city and where does that leave the board with respect to examining the planning merits of the deal that's structured? So who looks at the planning merits? Or is it just forgotten at the board because an agreement has been reached?
That's up to staff.
Oh, that's staff, that.
Afraid we've gone down that road. Any other questions of the mayor?
Oh, my question is, who will examine the planning merits? Who, from the city's perspective?
Asking the mayor?
That's, that's up to staff.
I would say that's up to council.
That's fine. Any other questions?
No, I'll go. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor DiGiorgio. Councillor Carroll, the question?
Well, interestingly enough, Mr Speaker, through you, my question of the mayor was, was in fact along councillor DiGiorgio's line. I noticed that you were somewhat distracted during councillor Vaughan's questions of staff. So I'm wondering, did you hear staff agree with councillor Vaughan's assessment of the danger to the community of settling this at the OMB?
No. Staff does not support this application. It does not support councillor Vaughan's motion, period. I don't know how much more clear I can be.
And did you hear...
And if you want to call them back on the floor to verify this, let's call staff back on the floor to verify what they just said.
And did you hear staff's total agreement of the potential dangers to the community and to the, to the, the planning precedent on this street of waiting to the OMB to, to reach an agreement? Did you hear staff agree with councillor Vaughan that the potential danger was that the building becomes more dense, higher, more of a danger, and more of a blight on the community? Did you hear that?
I heard that staff does not support this application.
So you didn't hear their professional opinion earlier this evening? Thank you, Mr Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Carroll. Councillor Palazzio, the question?
Depends what you want to listen to.
Councillor Nunziata, thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Carroll.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Mr Mayor, just for clarification purpose, is, so what councillor Vaughan is proposing is somehow in relation to what staff is recommending, that would set a bad precedent and somehow in the future?
Well, then every councillor's just gonna, just, you know, not even listen to staff, then why have staff here, councillor Palazzio? If applicants are going to come forward and say they want to develop something in your area, and staff says no, and the local councillor jumps in and says, "Hold on, partner. I will. Give me a million dollars, and we'll put it through council." Why have staff?
So in terms of, so in terms of principles of planning, now, in terms of principles of planning, now, our city staff, they're recommending against. And what's been recommended at this point is to hire outside staff. Do we have any idea of how much that's going to cost?
Oh, well, every time I bring this up, it's $10,000. This is a big application. It's going to cost $20,000 probably, if not more. So it's probably going to, you know, it's minimum $10,000. Something this size could be $20,000, $30,000.
So in essence, is...
Staff doesn't support it, so it doesn't make any sense.
Your judgment is based on what our staff is recommending.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Palazzio. That concludes the questions of the mover of the motion. Councillor Ford to speak. Thank you, councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Speaker. Folks, can I, no, the chatter in class to slow down a little bit?
I wasn't very successful with you. I'm not even going to try on them.
Okay. That's, that's fair. Well, folks, this is the problem down here at City Hall. Okay? This is inappropriate for any of us, not just, and not just councillor Vaughan, to sit with a developer, be it wherever, be it down at City Hall, be it, who knows, in a restaurant, wherever, and negotiate...
Councillor Ford, let's just be careful. Let's just be careful.
I will. I'm not going over the line. But to negotiate, hold it.
Thank you, councillor Carroll.
To negotiate section 37 money. It is a common practice down here, what I understand, that the councillor's involved in negotiating section 37 money. That's, it is disgusting, councillor Carroll, that we hire highly qualified staff right across the board here, paid by the taxpayers, and we have councillors negotiating with developers in their own ward the amount of money they're going to get for section 37. The people of Toronto, I want to ask, is that right? Or do they feel that is a slight conflict? Or do they feel that is a slight conflict? No councillor at all should be involved in negotiating monies with any developer in this city. That's the reason I came down here, to stop the nonsense. And obviously, I haven't done a good enough job to stop the nonsense because it's continuing. It's continuing. And, you know, what it comes down to is, the coun- the city staff doesn't agree, but, "Give me $500,000. It's Section 37. I'll make it happen. Give me a million. I'll make sure it happens on my Section 37."
Speaker!
That's the problem down here. That's a severe, severe problem. The people of Toronto have to speak up and stop this nonsense. It, it is not acceptable. Very simple.
Thank you, Counselor Ford. Counselor Perks to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. There are days when I come to work here, and I wonder if we've hit bottom yet. When I wonder if the aspersions cast, the, the drive-by slimings, the willingness to damage, tarnish the reputation, not only of individual members of council, but of the entire planning and redevelopment process in the downtown, I just wonder when we are going to hit bottom. It, it appalls me. It astonishes me that correct application of planning law in the province of Ontario, you know why they call it Section 37? Because it is a section of a piece of legislation passed by the legislature of the province of Ontario to ensure that when we get extra development in a neighborhood, we have the roads, and schools, and daycares, and other amenities for the community so that it is a decent place to live, according to provincial law. So that when we here in Toronto City Council apply provincial law so that we have adequate infrastructure to deliver the quality of life that Torontonians expect, somehow, we're committing a shakedown. It is an appalling state of affairs when the chief magistrate of the city of Toronto, admitting that he doesn't know the height of the building, admitting that he doesn't know the heritage status of the building, admitting that he didn't attend any of the planning meetings, admitting that he hasn't talked to any members of the community, admitting that he doesn't know the angular plane, admitting that he doesn't know the zoning, decides that somehow, it's an inappropriate building. And that this is an opportunity for him to score cheap points, cheap political and rhetorical points off the careers of those of us who work hard to make sure that the planning law of the province of Ontario is applied to the benefit of Torontonians. Since when is it wrong to make sure there's daycare? Since when is it wrong to ensure there is affordable housing? Since when is it wrong to make sure that our streets are in a good state of repair? It is only wrong when Rob Ford is running for reelection. That's the only time it's wrong.
Thank you, Counselor Perks. Counselor McConnell to speak.
Thank you, the Deputy Speaker. I wanted to stay out of the fray of something because actually, it is a large amount of the, of the world that Councilor Vaughan, myself, and Councilor Wong Tam live in, and that is trying to take on the applications that will always want too much and too high, and trying to work with our communities to get some reasonable settlements. And whether we do that before the final report or after the final report, yes, I believe that it is a bit unorthodox that we weren't able, in this particular case, to have staff in those negotiations. But it doesn't mean that there's anything wrong with the negotiations. What it does say, and what staff have said, is that at the end of the process, for any of you who do not understand this, at the end of the process, you look and see, what did we give over the envelope that was as of right? And what is a reasonable amount of money that the public, not that the councillor, that the public should get for that? And we have and we are given a range of monies from, from our staff, and that range of money was given to Councilor Vaughan, I believe it was from $800 or whatever, to a bit, a bit more than a million, and the settlement was a million. And the staff have not said that it is unreasonable in terms of the Section 37 agreement. They simply weren't part, they originally refused. We're at the OMB with nothing to say, and I think that normally, they would have done a similar report if they had been involved in the process, which they were not. But to suggest that there's something wrong with the, with the, the Section 37 amount is ridiculous. And by the way, for all of you to understand it really clearly, not one of us would ever enter into Section 37 discussions until they had settled on what it is that is appropriate to be built there. And if you go to the Shangri-La and you look across the street, you will see this building, which is just over 30 stories. It's not an outrageous number here, folks. And I think it's a bit unfair to characterize the way in which we have characterized members of council, who are in very untenable positions, like myself, trying to get benefits for our community, trying to keep reasonable infill that, that takes up the people of this city that need to be housed, and at the same time, is not so overwhelming that we destroy our communities. That is very tough work. It is what we do every day in, in those three wards, and I think councillor Grimes has have, having to do that, too, and councillor, Philian, sorry, John, councillor Philian. So we all have different realities that we have to work in these, but to then suggest that the only reason that the councillor came in with this settlement was in order to get a million dollars is wrong. The reason that the councillor came in with this settlement is so that the community and this city get something out of an OMB decision. Because if we don't go with something that is appropriate and that can be supported by community and developer, then we will get the original and we will get nada back from the OMB. It is always better to make the decision in community, and it is, you know, a good lesson, really, that we try as much as we can to do that in conjunction with our staff. So I think staff did the right thing. I think that they didn't, they, they weren't part of the negotiation, so they can't support it one way or another, but the councillor came up with, with a very tough negotiated settlement. And we'll see whether the OMB likes it or doesn't like it. If we don't approve it, we will have nothing in, in front of the OMB, and the community around us will get nada. So I think we'd better be smart and not get into this, this kind of battle that is going on on the floor.
Thank you, Counselor McConnell. Counselor Philian to speak.
Thank you. I, I think it's, this is an unfortunate situation, and I have tremendous respect for councillor Vaughan's knowledge of planning, and of course, tremendous respect for the, for the staff's knowledge of planning, and I think this is just a legitimate difference of opinion, and it's brought about by something called the Ontario Municipal Board. But the, I'm not going to speak so much to the issue as to some of the things that have been said, which are, I think, cross the line perhaps more than anything I've heard in this, in this room before. So I, I just need to say for my opinion for the record, that councillor Vaughan knows planning as well as anyone on this council, and that councillor Vaughan consults with his community and represents his community as well as anybody in this room. These issues are not simple. It's actually easier for me in the North York Centre because we have a very prescriptive plan there. The, there, there isn't, the, things are, are pretty clear-cut, including the Section 37. There's a, there's a formula for it, and it, and it works well. That doesn't happen elsewhere in the city, and it gets very complicated when you have a development that you would rather not have, but you know the Ontario Municipal Board is going to approve it, and, because they virtually always do, and you have to decide between going down swinging or negotiating something which you think is better for your community than going down swinging. So it's, it's one of those ones that nobody is wrong here, the, you know, I think, the, or perhaps nobody is wrong here, the planning staff have given their professional opinion. In an ideal world, perhaps councillor Vaughan and the planning staff would be in agreement. When you have to go to the Ontario Municipal Board, it's, it's a different world, and we, you know, if anybody did some research, they'd see that the city rarely wins there on these big developments. So, you know, it's always a tough choice for the, the local councillor. So I just, you know, I think councillor Vaughan's integrity was certainly impugned here, and, and the, and I think frankly, by some councillors who don't have development in their ward and don't know what it's like to be confronted with some of these large developments and to have to decide what's in the best interests of, of your community. And so I, I think just the record needs to be set straight here, that this is, what happened here is a, a normal process, and it's up to council now to decide which position they would prefer to take at the Ontario Municipal Board, and good luck in trying to figure that out. I'm still struggling with it, but the, you know, the insinuation that, that something, the word shakedown was used and then withdrawn, that, that, that anything of the sort, that anything even resembling anything like that, that, that anything highly unusual at all took place here is just incorrect.
Thank you, Counselor Philian. Counselor DiGiorgio.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. First of all, I will not be insinuating that anything incorrect was done. I do have fairly good knowledge of Section 37 of the Planning Act, and I would say that the essence of Section 37 is that it has to be a tripartite agreement, usually an agreement that's agreed to by the applicant, the community, and the city. Now, there is agreement between the community and the applicant. And if this proceeds to the board without the city taking a position, I would argue that the city has taken a position. They don't have a problem with the Section 37 benefit that's been negotiated. We want to separate the issue of the Section 37 benefit that's been negotiated from the actual development. Now, if the board is forced to look at the development, it may very well be that development will be approved. Why? Because the community supports the development. The board doesn't have the authorization to give out the Section 37 agreement. The Section 37 benefit is in the hands of council. We are the ones that determine the, the actual Section 37 benefit, not the board. So if this goes to the board, and we look at the merits of the application, the application could be approved, but the million dollars disappears. That's essentially what would happen if it goes to the board. So, based on that, the decision before me is, do I support the application with the million-dollar benefit, or do I end up supporting the application without the million-dollar benefit? And it seems to me, in that context, for me, it's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DiGiorgio. Counselor Milchin to speak.
Mr. Deputy Speaker, I will be moving referral to the January community, or council, council meeting, city council meeting. Mr. Deputy Speaker, I'm going to attempt to lower the temperature in, in the chamber here. First of all, I, I don't think councillor Vaughan did anything untoward. He had a development application in his ward. Staff did not support the proposal as it was brought forward. However, those discussions between staff and the applicant went, they went. Councillor Vaughan was engaged in it, came up with an alternative proposal that was vetted by City Legal. There were discussions around Section 37, which were apparently consistent with the position that the city planning department, legal department, would have taken on that application if they were going to be supportive of it. And the dispute, as I understand it, between the city or planners and the applicant is one about the built form, so the shape of the building. Not necessarily the height, not necessarily all these parameter, the setbacks and so on. But it's very difficult for me, or anyone else on the floor of council, on the evening of the third day of council, to be delving into this and second-guessing the entire exercise. Unfortunately, because there is an applica- a settlement proposal here without the benefit of a staff report on it, and a proposed Section 37 agreement, fortunately, councillor Vaughan opened himself up to criticism of checkbook planning. Councillor Vaughan isn't the first one, councillor Vaughan, I'm sorry, don't get upset with me, listen to what I'm going to say. Councillor Vaughan is not the first one who has been accused of this. Others have been accused of it. I've been accused of it. You try to negotiate the best development you can within the planning regime we have, and try to maximize the benefits for our community. This council wants to increase development charges dramatically. Development industry is going to say that's unfair, that that's taking too much money from them. So there's always criticism about this. What I've heard today is that we have a proposal that's not out of line with, with the area, and we certainly know the area, it's just around the corner. And we have a Section 37 agreement that the quantum is consistent with other things going on in the area. But we don't have the benefit of some further analysis and recommendations from staff. And this matter, I am told, was merely appealed to the OMB several weeks ago. There is not going to be a hearing before Christmas. There is not going to be a hearing the week after the new year. But there is a council meeting in January. So if there's an urgent matter requiring legal, if there's an urgent matter requiring legal city solicitor getting direction from council, whether it's an OMB hearing or something else, it can be brought forward in the January council meeting, if it is urgent. And it might result in the same proposal here. It might still result in staff providing us with an analysis and still rejecting it. But at least we'll have a piece of paper in front of us we can make as a council uninformed decision. I actually, I do have, I do have faith in councillor Vaughan, in what he, in his ability to do these things, and I'm sure he's, he's done his best. And it might be the very best that can be done. Perhaps nothing else, nothing better. But unfortunately, the way this has come forward has raised all these questions, and I think we can take that pause for four, five, six weeks, get some more information, and then we'll, we'll make an informed decision.
Thank you, Counselor Milchin. That completes the speaker's, subject to councillor Vaughan, who's asked to go last.
This site has been in front of the community now for almost five years, and it first came forward-
Sorry, sorry, just a sec, just a sec, councillor Vaughan. Yeah, that was a motion to defer. Okay, so we're into a little mini debate on the deferral itself. So, so let's, for speaking to the deferral, let's put your names down the center column, councillor Vaughan, beginning with you.
So this, this proposal has been in front of the community now for five years. The base zoning on this site is 13 meters subway station. I think we can all agree that 13 meters, which is the staff recommendation as we walked into negotiations, is unacceptable to build on a subway line in a major downtown city. If you want three-story buildings on Queen Street next door to subway stations, be my guest. Good luck, however, intensifying a meeting in the growth targets. This land was supposed to be governed by Heritage Conservation District designation, but Clerk's Department failed to notify the property owner despite being requested, and as a result, the entire HCD was going to be tossed out because of a technical error. We had to split this property out from the HCD, and as a result, the existing zoning stands. The existing zoning across the street has produced exactly the same building, with exactly the same limiting distance agreements, and exactly the same relationship to existing heritage, and that's what's going to be approved at the OMB. What's really good about this is we're not going to approve what was approved just across the street, which is a 65-story tower close to the Shangri-La Hotel. That's the existing zoning condition that governs the, the properties in this area. Down the street by one more building, you have a 35-story building, almost one and a half times the existing approvals that were recommended by, by city council. But all those approvals, the ones I just listed, have been approved by this council. So we're walking into the OMB with that standing in front of us. If we defer, however, what we lose, what we lose is not just the Section 37, and that's what it is, what we lose is the commercial component which we negotiated of this building. What we lose are the setbacks to the, the property to the south, which were of great concern to the condominium to the south. And what we also lose, what we also lose if we do all of that, quite frankly, is the ability to make this building part of the neighborhood rather than simply a zoning exercise. There are being all kinds of concerns, and I'll speak to them when I speak to this issue, all kinds of concerns about when the Section 37 was negotiated. It was done in the last two days with the blessing of City Legal. In fact, City Legal instructed-
Thank you.
Once you have the ballpark figure for Section 37, I suggest you, you speak to the lawyer and see what you can achieve. When you get instructions like that-
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Vaughan. Counselor Nunzietta to speak. On the deferral.
Yes, okay, sorry, I didn't see my name. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be supporting the deferral, and as councillor Milchin mentioned, the OMB hearing is not scheduled yet, and I think if we defer it and wait for a staff report to come back, where we have a staff report, because the report that we have is a refusal report from staff, hopefully, when it comes back at the next meeting, there will be some dialogue with the city staff and with the applicant, maybe to amend the application where it would be acceptable, where we wouldn't have to go to the OMB and spend thousands of dollars in legal fees. So I think it's best for us at this point is to defer it and wait for the staff to come back with the report on the recommendation that councillor Vaughan has put forward today. That is the right thing to do today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nunzietta. Counselor Perks, on the referral.
Thank you, members. I, I urge all of you to vote against the referral. The planning context for this area is very, very, very obvious. We all walk by it almost every single day. It's on the north side of Queen Street, just past University. A building of exactly that same height is what councillor Vaughan was able to accomplish after the staff referral, the staff reject, the staff advice to reject the application. What they wanted originally was much taller. Through negotiations with the applicant, the height came down. Similarly, we managed, councillor Vaughan, managed to get the applicant to agree to move the building back from the south lot line so you wouldn't have windows right up against the lot line, effectively sterilizing the right, the property rights of the person to south, and creating impact on the community. Similarly, the, in negotiations with the applicant, councillor Vaughan and the community, and I want to emphasize that, the neighborhood was involved in these conversations, was able to get a concession from the applicant to put commercial throughout the whole podium. So office employment. When was the last time you saw a building come forward that had street commercial, office employment, and residential all in one? Councillor Milchin was right about one thing. Councillor Vaughan is extraordinarily good at working- Councillor Vaughan is extraordinarily good at working planning applications through. As councillor Philion said, he's probably the best among us here, and it's because, quite simply, he's had to learn it in a trial by fire. The number of applications we have coming in through Toronto East York Community Council from his ward, councillor Wong Tam's ward, and councillor McConnell's ward is larger than all of your community councils put together. Be aware of that. So we're getting pretty darn good at Toronto East York Community Council at figuring out how to settle these matters. Avoid going to the Ontario Municipal Board, take the agreement that's in front of us, and for God's sake, don't get distracted because someone blew off and had a temper tantrum earlier in the debate.
Thank you councillor Perks. Councillor Scheiner on the deferral.
Thank you for the microphone. You know, Mr Chairman, this is a difficult one. It really is. Because the planning staff refused an application based on the technical nature of it, feeling that they could defend it, although it may be a hard fight at the board, part of it was side yards in different areas, and they were involved in this and went to Toronto Community Council that way. The local councillor got involved with it, and he's made some amendments to try and make it better, working with his community, and is trying to get the best out of what he feels is a bad situation. What I find the worst problem in this is that the applicant now made an offer, as I understand it, that said, "Take it or leave it for this meeting." And we can't accept those when there is an opportunity to have it go back to the community council to consider it and possibly make a recommendation that is contrary to what planning staff may say. And the planning staff were not involved in the negotiations for the Section 37. And in that case, I find our planning staff in the district I represent very weak in that. There are some real problems. And often, the applicants have come back and they'll make a better offer and a better settlement with a politician to get it through than they will with the planning staff. So we have a fundamental problem in the way that these applications are carried out. There's problems with this application, and staff were prepared to defend it at the board. But as I heard from the solicitor, they don't know if they'll win. They don't know if they have a real strong case. And they feel that there's some involvement they should have had. So that's why I say this is a very difficult one for us, because councillor Vaughan has done what he feels is his best. But I think the error that has been made is saying, "I'll take that offer to council," when it should have been, "I'll take that offer back to community council." Because if it came here with the support of community council, even if planning staff had rejected it and a report from them, which we don't have, I'd feel much better dealing with it.
Thank you councillor Scheiner. Councillor Holliday.
The approval of the proposed project would set a negative precedent for future development and undermines the policies of the official plan as they relate to built form, heritage, and development within mixed-use areas. And it does not implement council-approved guidelines such as the design criteria for the review of tall building proposals, and represents an overdevelopment on the subject site. So that's pretty clear.
That was the original.
That is the original, but this, I've got councillor Vaughan's motion here. It's still 24 stories. As a matter of fact, if anything, he's added four floors, increased by two to four floors of retail now. He's extended the building to the rear property line. Like, I don't think that this changes that staff position. I'm sure it doesn't. But the Ontario Municipal Board has not set the date to hear this yet, so I think we should send it back, and let's see if we can get some of these problems resolved. These are pretty serious comments that staff are making here. And it sets a bad example, it says. And it represents overdevelopment on the subject site. So if you want to look on it, it's page 248 of 306, in the TEE report to council. But, you know, I don't think we should rush into it with those comments before, so I would support sending it back.
Councillor De Giorgio to speak.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Speaker. I will not, you know, this is a tough one, I must admit, but I will not be supporting the deferral, simply because I believe that in looking at the merits of the application, from what I understand, it will be a successful, it would be successful at the OMB. Not only that, if in fact we were to defer and the Section 37 benefit disappears, there's nothing to keep the applicant from revising his application to increase the height and still go to the OMB and get the increased height, in my view. In my view, he would be successful in getting a height over the height that exists across the street by virtue of the, but in any event, it's because of the belief, as I said earlier, that you're looking at something that's going to be approved, especially since the community is in support of it. That has a huge, huge part to play. Now, it could be that the staff could go to the OMB, and with an outside planner and whatnot, and say, "You know, the design guidelines are totally against what we're trying to accomplish." But the reality is, the design guidelines speak to the cosmetics maybe, speaks to angular planes. You know, 65, 68-story building, whether you have a three, four-story podium or not, I'm not sure it affects the angular planes all that much.
65 stories, it's 15.
Well, whatever, the angular planes are not going to be affected. Well, I like to speak with big numbers, because that's, tall buildings to me is large. Downtown is 60, 65 stories. But in any event, I, it's because of that that I don't think I can support the deferral. Thank you.
Thank you councillor De Giorgio. So, oh, Mayor Ford on the deferral.
I just, I-
Hang on.
I'll just be very brief. I encourage the councillors to support the deferral. You've got to support the chair of the planning committee. This is fundamental. This is just, we have chairs for reasons, they do a great job, we have staff for reasons. If councillor Milchin was fine with this, he'd come out, and he would come out and say, "No problem." Okay? Let's get this property for us at the next council meeting and take it from their support to the deferral.
Okay, stop your time. Councillor Perks, I'm going to get to you. Councillor Perks, on a point of privilege, what is your point of privilege?
Point of privilege, actually, the mayor has just somehow made councillor Milchin the chair of the committee that I actually chair. I'm the chair of the Toronto East York Community Council. It was our committee that considered, it's our committee that has responsibility for considering planning applications within our community council area. The mayor has no business disparaging the role of community councils and community council chairs in the development application process.
Thank you for that helpful interjection councillor Perks. Mayor Ford?
Are you going to rule on that?
I'm ruling this not a point of privilege. Councillor, Mr Mayor, do you have anything further to say on the matter? Okay, that completes the speakers' list. On the deferral, there will be a recorded vote.
Councillor De Giorgio.
The vote is 12 to 20.
Thank you councillor Vaughan to speak.
Thank you, and I appreciate that this is a difficult issue. It was a difficult issue in the community. This application came in substantially higher, with substantial encroachments on the property to the south, and with real difficulties in terms of the challenges it presented to the Heritage Conservation District. My neighbourhood, and the neighbourhoods that I represent, both on the north and the south side of Queen, have been dealing with this sort of height, and decisions from the OMB which have permitted, at M5V, 35-story buildings on the south side of streets despite zoning of 23 metres. They have permitted TIFF, they have permitted Shangri-La, they have permitted the building to the north side of Queen Street with exactly the same zoning. My neighbourhoods unfortunately have become far too familiar with the consequences of not negotiating with developers and simply surrendering issues to the OMB, because those buildings, when they go that way, don't actually deliver to us the ability to manage the density that arrives on the street. This building came in originally as an office building, and the applicant went away because we couldn't get the shape and the dimensions of the building proper. It came back as a residential building, much, much taller, and again, we pushed the size of the building down, but then the building started to overhang the neighbouring condominium. We negotiated that away. It started to encroach on the rear property line, in the rear lane. We negotiated that away and gave space to the neighbouring condominium. It didn't tie in with the existing heritage on either side of this building, and we redesigned the podium to tie into those sites. We also, as practised in the ward, got family housing and knockout panels between units to make sure the housing here fits in and strengthens the community, provides diversity in the neighbourhood, so we aren't just housing singles. Additionally, one of the things that both the neighbourhood to the south and the community in general demanded was more commercial in the podium. They didn't want 100% residential right on a subway stop. They thought this should have much, much more commercial. And so we pushed the developer back to put much, much more commercial into the podium, so jobs are on Queen Street, not just people living there, and we achieved that. And after we got all of that done, through five years of negotiation, and threats of going to the OMB, and holding it back, and getting it forward, and putting it in front of planning, and putting it in front of the community, and negotiating with the applicants, we finally got to the point with a building that we had a choice to make. We either said yes to the building with all those improvements, or we got the original application going to the board. And the original application had none of those benefits, had more height, had more density, it was even more egregious. So we're in a situation now where we have very few meetings between now and when a board meeting would be set. The applicant has got to get construction finance put in place, and they're saying, "If you want this building, make a decision today, or else we go back to the original." Because the stakes are high enough, the planning in the area defines buildings in a certain way, we will win at the board, and the community was sitting there to listen to this. We asked the applicant to leave. I sat with the community and said, "What do you want me to do? If you want me to oppose it, I'll fight to the death for you. If you want a settlement, I'll go back and try and secure those things through negotiations." We did that. That we did. That we did. We negotiated and got what we want, as much as we can get, out of the documents in front of you. And then we turned to the developer at the end of that process and said, "Now we have to have a Section 37 amount." We turned to staff and asked for comparables in the neighbourhood. They gave them to us. Legal asked us to do that, and we did it. And we delivered the amount to the developer, and we settled on the amount voluntarily. The developer understands that when you build close to subway stations, and when you build with density, and you go from 13 metres to a height of about 20 stories, the 13,000 or so square metres in additional density does not come free to a developer, we need the capacity to shoulder that density in the neighbourhood. And that's why the Section 37 amount is for streetscape improvements to Queen Street, because Queen Street needs some help, and that's where it's going. To repair sidewalks, to make sure the street trees and the bike rings and all the other things we need, including new TTC stops, and the TTC entrance onto the Osgood subway station, are all done in a way to accommodate growth that's happening in this community. And so I ask you, this is a good settlement. It's not unlike any of the other settlements that get dropped on the floor of this council while we're in session, because we're racing against time sometimes because of bad provincial policy that all of us struggle with, those three letters, OMB. If I had the choice, the Clerk's Department would have sent the letter to the applicant, and this property would have been in the HCD. If I had the choice, this building would be consistent with the building just next to it on University Avenue, the Health Sciences Building that's there. I don't have that choice. I have a choice between the what's in front of us and a building closer to 30 stories. That's the choice in front of this community. The community made a decision, and that decision is the one I ask you to support today.
Thank you. That completes the list of speakers. I suppose the vote is on the motion? Okay, we have the motion on the screen, please. And there will be a recorded vote.
The motion carries 25 to 4.
Thank you. If my guess is right, we now turn to item TE, oh, sorry, on the item, yeah, on the item as amended.
That was the deferral vote. Are you on it?
Recorded vote?
Yeah, I think so. Councillor Lee, please. Councillor Lee?
He holds everything in the ward now. He doesn't even know where they are.
The item as amended carries 26 to 3.
We turn now to item, page 4, item TE 20.18, request for direction report, 24 Mercer Street, zoning amendment application, Ward 20. I see no one listed to question. Mayor Ford, you held the item.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr Deputy Speaker. I have a motion the staff wanted me to put forward, just referring this back to community council. Thank you.
Questions of the mayor?
Councillor Vaughan to question.
Did you ask the staff who drafted this motion?
No, staff approached me and asked me to move this motion.
You know why they did?
Staff asked me to move this motion, so I'm doing what staff asked me to do.
Do you know what size this building is?
Nope.
You know what street it's on?
Nope. Mercer.
You know which side of the street it's on?
What does that have to do with my motion? You're supposed to question-
You know what the problem with the development is?
What does this have to do with the motion?
You know what the problem with the application is?
Well, yeah, briefly here?
Yeah.
There's no parking. There's no parking at all.
You know what?
You may not like cars, but I like cars, and you're putting up 27 units with seven bicycle parking spaces.
How wide is the lot?
27 units and no parking.
How wide is-
So you think everyone's going to come there, is going to take the, live there, is going to take the TTC?
How wide is the lot?
Or ride their bike in the winter.
How wide is this lot?
Counselor, it's right here.
How wide is this lot?
I don't have all that information here, but all I'm saying is staff asked me to refer it back.
How much of the site is covered by a designated heritage building?
You know what?
How much of the site is covered by a designated heritage building?
That's-
How much of this site is covered by a designated heritage building?
That's why we're referring it back.
How much-
Staff can sit here and bring something forward.
You declared an interest in this, and you're very concerned about it.
You're just a little upset. You got caught sneaking something through, you're upset.
I'd like to know how much of the site-
Last minute, you tried to sneak something through, and you're upset.
I'm asking you a question.
That's all you're upset at.
I'd like an answer.
Mayor Ford? Mayor Ford? Councillor Vaughan, I think you've achieved your goal now, with your future, with your further questions, could you direct them out to clarifying the motion, please?
I have questions of staff.
Questions of staff, are there?
Okay, questions of staff in the, golly, in the right-hand column.
How wide is this lot?
Well, okay, councillor Vaughan to question staff.
How wide is this lot that the mayor would like to build a parking garage on?
The lot is extremely narrow. I'm just flipping to the actual width. I believe it's 24 feet, if my memory serves me.
24 feet?
I believe something like-
And is the building on site, is the building on the site a designated building?
The building is listed, and the city has moved to designate it.
So how would you build a parking garage underneath a building you couldn't demolish?
You would have to get permission to alter the building, relocate it, build a parking garage, and put the building back, I would assume.
So we'd have to remove the building, and then building parking, how many parking spots could you build on a lot that's only, how far, how wide is it, 24 feet?
You need enough-
That's less than the distance, that's less than the distance of me to the mayor right now.
You would not be able to build many parking spaces.
If any. And did the applicant come forward with the request not to build any?
And did the applicant come forward with the request not to build any?
I believe the applicant has tried to reduce the parking, if not to zero, to very few parking spaces.
It was the applicant who didn't want to do this.
There's some difficulty in constructing on this site due to its, very small size.
And, and is not the real issue on this site the fact that there's no limiting agreement and they want to build lot line to lot line and compromise adjoining properties' development rights?
That's among the issues. It's a heritage building, it's a very small site, very, very difficult site to construct on.
And best to your knowledge, has this building ever been supported by myself or members of my community?
Been supported?
Yeah.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair.
Have we ever voted to approve this building at community council? Have we ever moved this building forward as, as an application to be supported, or have we always opposed this application?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Right. Thank you.
Counselor Nunzietta to question.
So the ma, we have a supplementary report here, T 20.18A, which the staff has asked, and the mayor has moved that motion on 18A, to send it back to Toronto East York Community Council, refer back to January 22nd meeting. Can you explain why you want this application referred back?
At, at community council, we were directed to have further discussions with the applicant. We had that meeting. They supplied us with some more information. We're reviewing that information. The applicant owner is not in town right now. She's on the west coast, and we have been unable to complete those discussions. They are open to continuing the discussions, so we thought it was in the best interest of the negotiation to refer it back.
So you, so you haven't reached a settlement yet. So your advice is to refer it back to January to give you an opportunity to reach a settlement.
We will-
And, and the applicant is willing to have that dialogue with the city staff?
Continue the discussions, yes.
Thank you.
And thank you, Counselor Nunzietta. Counselor Scheiner to question.
So it's overdevelopment, the wrong building, no parking, no side yards, right?
That's correct.
And you'd like it to go back to community council?
Well, I, I don't want to go in public. We haven't had disclosure from the-
I just, you'd like it to go back to community council-
Yes.
So you can work in between.
That's right.
The local council is aware of that?
Yes, he is.
Is he opposed to that?
Not that I'm aware of.
So he's more than supportive and would have moved the motion the mayor has on the floor, to your knowledge?
To our knowledge, yes.
Thank you.
That completes the questions. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Davis. Counselor, Counselor, Counselor Scheiner, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Vaughn to speak.
For three days, I've tried to get the mayor's office and asked the mayor directly to tell me why he held this item in my ward. And, and he shrugged his shoulders.
Whoa, 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 just a second, just a second. Just a, Counselor, I haven't recognized anyone yet, so just, just-
Hold on.
You just cool your jets, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, yeah, but, but you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, come to order, please. You haven't been, let me rec, let me recognize you and then invite you to speak to your point. Mr. Mayor Ford on a point of privilege.
Counselor Vaughn approached my staff, and my staff told him, go talk to the mayor himself. He has not said one word to me in this whole council meeting for the last three days. So for him to come up and say, I talked to them personally, that's an outright lie. Okay? And now that is a lie. And he can, you can take me to the integrity commissioner, take me where you want. That is not true, and we can get the tapes. No, no, you just said you spoke with me. You never even spoke-
Counselor Vaughn.
You, you didn't even speak to me. That's-
Okay. Okay, let's, would, would someone, would someone like to make a quorum call, perhaps? If the clerks would please take a roll call, the members might help by taking their seats.
Members of council, could you please press your buttons to, so we can start the meeting? We need quorum.
Counselor Lee, please, would you? Counselor Bai Lao. Counselor Doucette, please. Counselor DiGiorgio.
Deputy Mayor Holliday, please. Counselor Fillon and Counselor Vaughn. Counselor Crisanti, please.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Counselor Perk, Counselor Milchun, would you? Counselor Prutze, please, would you press your button for us? Counselor Davis, please.
Counselor McConnell, thank you. There is quorum present, Mr. Deputy Speaker. There are 28 members in the chamber.
Okay, so let's take another run at this. Counselor, Counselor Vaughn to speak.
Could I join your caucus? This item, this particular project, has never been supported by the neighborhood, has never been supported by my office, and has never been supported by staff. The applicant went to the O M B because of that. We have explained to the applicant that this is an impossible site to build on, it's too narrow as a development site, it doesn't have the capacity even to house cars, let alone a condominium tower on top of it. Nonetheless, the applicant thought that they could get past the heritage rules and keep the heritage intact by not putting parking on the site. Had nothing to do with me. Appreciate the advice I got from the mayor on it, though. The challenge with this site, and the challenge with many sites in the downtown, in the area that I represent, in particular in the entertainment district, is that there are a number of small heritage buildings which we're seeking to protect and provide designation for in greater clarity so applicants don't waste anybody's time with these ridiculous applications. The problem with them is that, is that they are too small as development sites. And even though technology now allows for tall towers on these sites, some sites just aren't right for development. We say no. Normally, a more seasoned applicant goes away. In this case, this particular applicant is in a bit of a panic because the assessment value on these properties, because of the densities that have been handed out by this council, are going through the roof. And so as a result, a lot of heritage in these neighborhoods are suddenly seeing their tax bills jump from eight to $23 million in sites like this, and they have no capacity to generate that income, and because of heritage designation, they have no ability to redevelop, and because of the size of the lots, they can't redevelop. And these owners are being plunged into bankruptcy because of policies passed around impact long before any of us were on council. I won't name the premier. It gets people upset when you name that particular person in this place. But the challenge we have now, the challenge we have now with this applicant, is that they're at the point of going bankrupt, and they're afraid they're not going to be able to realize the tax bill on the site with the property that they currently have. And so out of an abundance of compassion, and with a great deal of hope that imagination and the planning department's skills can be brought to bear on this property, we'll find a way forward that allows this applicant to redevelop the site sensitive to the heritage, unrestricted by some of the, the zoning regulations that might not allow for her to pay her taxes and see if there's a way to figure this out. But if the applicant persists in bringing an application forward that's too tall, that impacts the laneway in a way that doesn't help the restaurants on King Street, that doesn't respect the heritage the way it's supposed to be, and doesn't meet the other zoning requirements with a legitimate explanation, I can assure you the answer you'll get back from this counselor and from the community that I represent, and from the planning department, and from Heritage Services, is that this is not a development site. It's why we need a heritage tax policy that respects heritage and protects these spaces, which in this case, houses a film company, an architect's firm, and has residential on site. It's a good little warehouse. It's got some strange business on the third floor that really isn't heritage, but has been caught up in the heritage designation. We're working with this applicant. Because your job as the city councilor is not simply to say yes or no. Your job is to facilitate a process with expert advice from planning, with input from legal, in collection with your colleagues, and to bring forward applications that work. But there are some politicians that like to stand up and say yes or no and pretend they're defending the public interest. It's never that simple, unfortunately. And while it makes for great theater and perhaps a great clip, if the person who held this item, when I approached them at the beginning of council and said, why have you held this, and didn't simply shrug their shoulders and say there's a staff report, and if the staff of that particular counselor, uh, the member of council, when I asked them repeatedly, what is the issue, and all I was told was get a comment from somebody who was coaching football or not present for most of the meetings, I got completely frustrated. And so I relied on the staff of that particular member of council, and that particular staff member said, go talk to the person. I said, you know what? If you can't tell me what the issue is, and you're the council liaison, I'll wait for it to come to the floor of council. Because the motion that the mayor is moving is the motion I helped draft with staff to get this project into a position where perhaps we could solve a problem. I don't know why, I don't know why it was held. It was. Can we please just pass it?
Thank you, Counselor Vaughn. That completes the list of speakers. We now come to a vote. Can we put the motion on the screen, please? Recorded vote. We're in the middle of a vote, members of council. We're in the middle of a vote, members of council.
The motion carries unanimously, 29 in favor.
Well, isn't, isn't that the surprise of the day?
We now turn-
We now turn to item T E 20.52, construction staging area, number 290 Adelaide Street West, in Ward 20. I don't see anyone on the list to question staff. Counselor Vaughn, you held the item.
Just want to show you, and I'd like to present all three of these items together. There's an overhead there. We have an emerging problem in the downtown core, thanks to all the development that's arriving, seemingly simultaneously. This is the entertainment district. Those pink lines on the map are construction sites that are closing a lane of traffic. This is a significant issue. In New York City, in New York City, there's a requirement that you build your building on your property, otherwise you don't get the construction permit. But the real issue, and we're dealing with this now, Planning and Growth, and I, my colleagues in Planning and Growth, I'm sorry to repeat the speech, but the real issue we have to contend with, and we have to do it fairly quickly, otherwise you will not be able to move downtown, regardless of how many traffic studies Public Works conducts. The real problem we're having is that, is that this is the cause of much of the downtown gridlock. And so, one of the things we're looking to, 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 one of the problems we're looking to solve is, is to require construction staging definitions and agreements to be tabled as part of initial applications. Sorry. You're going to make me laugh if you keep smiling like that, sorry. We need to, we need to do this. And we, and, and the reason we need to do this is because if you look at Counselor Wong Tam's ward, or Counselor McConnell's ward, what you'll see is it's replicated right across the entire downtown core. This is a significant issue, and one of the problems we have is that once we issue the, the approval, and once the building permit is issued, we're, we're cut out of the process as councillors, but we also are cut out of the cross-referencing amongst staff as to what the impact is on the various downtown streets, and it is a significant one. It's also significant for one other reason. I also chair the advisory committee on disability. And, and for people who have visual impairments in particular, but people with mobility issues often get pushed into traffic as a result of these sidewalk closures, and often lose their way to work. In fact, we heard a story of someone who lives on the Espinod, who was blind, and who had a very prescribed route to work, and because of the construction, was suddenly confused and was lost for several hours in the downtown core because they couldn't orientate themselves, and it was, they were late at night coming back from work. We need to deal with this issue, and we need to deal with it very quickly at Planning and Growth, and when it comes back, I hope that we can find a way to resolve this issue. It's the same issue on all three. All three are part of this map, and I've just asked that consideration as we, as we vote on these, that we start turning our attention to this. Thank you.
Wong to speak.
I think we'll be looking at this as well as part of the downtown transportation study. And we are looking at the legislative problems related to this. The reality is, I think some of us would like to look at an arrangement, because, because too many developers are on the street for too long, but we can only charge cost recovery. And, and we need to look at an arrangement where, depending on, I think we have to look at an arrangement, depending on how long they're on the street, they have to pay different fees. I mean, the arrangement to be on this, on, on, on a street like Young Street, or any of those streets, for, for 18 months is completely unacceptable. Three years, oh, three, that, you know, that's, that's a no-go. But I think to, you have two choices to move them off the street. If you can't do that, if you have to keep them on the street, we're going to need some regulatory changes from the province in order to solve this problem. And, and Public Works is going to be seized with that, and will be very interested in trying to look at that and some other things in the next year.
Thank you. Counselor Shiner, you would like to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam Speaker, in particular, I, I noticed one of these applications, and I read through the recommendations on here with much delight, as one of them was a property that I had to declare interest on many times until we sold it. So, the, the portion that I read on here is, one of the requirements was, and it's in the reports we're holding, "City council direct the applicant to provide an installed public art, including mural artwork, onto every elevation of the hoarding boarding with adequate spotlighting for nighttime illumination at their sole cost, to the satisfaction of the ward councillor." Now, I thought that this was absolutely fantastic. It's happening on some of the sites down there, and I understand that it's happening throughout the Toronto and the East York Community Council area. And I commend you, all you, totally for doing that. I would like to see this going on all hoarding, around all construction sites in the city of Toronto. And I'm not quite sure how to achieve it, except to ask that this section eight be forwarded to the city manager's office for his consideration through the various departments, because, or, or to... Is there some? Okay, well, I, I would just tell you, wherever it goes, I think it's phenomenal. I, I won't move anything on it. But the fact that it's here and that you've done it in Toronto, we all see the ugly construction hoarding and the pollstering that has gone on in the past that we fought. Instead, when you say, "Make it a mural", then it's the responsibility of the owner then to maintain it. It can turn these ugly advertising disgraceful sites, and not just ones that take up the streets, but all the construction hoarding into something that's really a benefit on it. So, I, I want to say that's great that I see it here, and I'd love to see it go through the city.
Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, Counselor Vaughn, what was that?
I just want to give credit to Counselor Wong Tam, who's not here. She's actually the person who's, who's pushed this forward in terms of construction hoarding, and she deserves all the credit. We've borrowed her, all of our applications.
Okay, Counselor McConnell?
Very quickly, Madam Speaker, thank you. I just wanted to add, and by the way, if you want to go and see the first one that was done, I think it was, or one of the first ones, it's around Allen Gardens, it's an Aboriginal paintings, and it's absolutely spectacular. And we're already thinking about how on earth might we save it, because it is so beautiful. But what I wanted to just raise on this matter, because all three of us have had this terrible conundrum, is that, for example, it is now slowing down some of our transportation work as well. And John Mendy is here, and Mr. Mendy was very instrumental in trying to get a resolution on Sherburne Street, because the Sherburne Lane, south of Queen, will not, or King, will not be able to be completed until just before the Pan Am Games. So, one of the things that we also need to think about on all of this construction is not only is it slowing down some of our own construction, but in addition, we have a drop dead date of 2015, where people are going to be here in the city, and where we can't have any of these things closed. We have to have the construction finished, we have to have a resolution as to whether or not we will allow it.
Okay, I'm going to, Counselor McConnell, I'm going to, I, it looks like some councillors are leaving, we're losing quorum here, so...
That's fine, I was done, actually. So, I was just going to say that it is, if I could, the Pan Am Games is 2015, but also Pride 2014. So, we need to get a problem solved very quickly. Thank you.
All right, so let's, let's vote on it, because councillors are leaving, we're losing quorum here. So, on 2052, recorded vote. T 2052?
Counselor Perutz, please. Counselor DiGiorgio, thank you. Counselor?
The item carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Okay, on item T 20.53, recorded vote.
Counselor Perutz, please. Who am I missing? Counselor Davis, please.
The item carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
On item T 20.57, recorded vote.
Counselor Carroll. Counselor Davis, please. Counselor Matlow. Counselor Perks, please.
The item carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Counselor Layton, you have a motion to introduce certain bills?
Yes, that leave be granted to introduce bills 1,617 through 1708 inclusive.
Shall leave be granted to introduce these bills? Recorded vote.
Counselor Palacio. Counselor Crisanti, please. Counselor Crawford.
Counselor Perutz, please. Counselor Lee, please. Counselor Perks.
The motion to introduce the general bills carries unanimously, 26 in favor.
Shall these bills be passed and declared as bylaws? Recorded vote.
Counselor DiGiorgio, please. Counselor Carroll, Madam Speaker.
Counselor Vaughn, please. Counselor Fillian, please.
Come on, we're not finished yet, just a couple more minutes.
The motion to enact the general bills carries unanimously, 26 in favor.
Counselor DeBairmaaker, you have a motion to introduce the confirming bill.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'm moving that leave be granted to introduce a bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of the council meeting of November 27th, 8th, and 9th, 2012.
Shall leave be granted to introduce this bill? Recorded vote.
Counselor Carroll, please. Counselor Bai Lao. Counselor Perutz. Counselor DiGiorgio. Counselor Layton, please.
Counselor Cole. Counselor Fragadakis. Counselor Fillian, please. Counselor McConnell.
Counselor Davis, please. Counselor Perks, please.
The motion to introduce the confirming bylaw carries unanimously, 26 in favor.
Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? Recorded vote. I want to wish members of council Merry Christmas.
Counselor Cole. Counselor Fragadakis. Counselor Crawford. Counselor McConnell, please.
Counselor DiGiorgio, please.
And let's, let's thank staff for the last three days. Give a hand to staff.
Counselor Davis.
The motion to enact the confirming bill carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Okay, meetings adjourned. Thank you.